At this time, we will go ahead and call the meeting to order. Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Hughes?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez had called in, she's on her way but ran into traffic. Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
And Vice Mayor Cortez is also experiencing some technical difficulties on her end. At this time, we'll begin with a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. At this time, we have our call to the public, our public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit those public comment to three minutes, and individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask after a review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or act on any matter during an open call to the public unless those matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. I do have Mr. Tom Rankin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and the rest of the council, thanks again for letting me talk. I'm going to talk about a problem that's been going on in Florence for years. It's been going on, I was chief of police. And that's the inmates from the county jail and the inmates from CCA that are being released, and Snake, you know how it goes over there. They'd be released any time, a day or night. Well, folks, these people are starting to become a problem to the citizens of the town. And two incidences where I've been involved, or my wife has been involved, one came to the Speedway over here and demanded a ride. Now, we're talking, it was dark, I don't know exactly what time, but he demanded a ride, and just kept on and on. Finally, some guy showed up in a pickup that didn't know Donna, and I don't think they knew him, because they asked her if he'd been given trouble. And she said, yes. And they were both packing firearms, and in the Second Amendment, they have that right. And they run him off. Or the other night down at Circle K, we see one of them steal a guy's bicycle, and I turn to Circle K, the lights on and everything. Finding out today that a lot of mental patients are being released from CCA and the county. CCA is holding inmates from the city of Mesa, Coolidge is putting inmates in there, and I don't know who all else is. Because it's cheaper to house them in CCA than it is with Penal County, I'm sure that our chief is well aware of that. Now County is very expensive to put somebody in there. This is a problem that needs to be addressed by the county, the county attorney's office, you all, the town attorney, the chief of police, but somebody's going to get hurt is we're letting out. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I know that you that live up in the Anthem subdivision of Florence don't have that problem. We have it down here. And you need to be made aware of it so we can get some direction going on it. Judy, and I think if you ask Dan, he'll tell you the same thing. He probably heard it before, and I believe the chief is well aware of the problems we've got going with them. But those are the type of people they're letting out with no money. They give them a plastic card, a debit card, and nobody's going to cash a debit card for them. They'll just tell them they can't do it. So these people don't have any money, they don't have the access to telephone, to make a telephone call, to get somebody to come pick them up or anything. And there's no public transportation leaving here. There is, but it's not at the time that they're being released from jail or CCA. So I would just bring it to your attention so maybe you can get something started on it, working with the county and CCA, and see if we can't stop the problem from happening before it occurs. Thank you.
I want to say thank you and also take a moment to respond, because it's not just an issue that is impacting our core of Florence. We do have transient releasees who have made their way all the way up into other communities. The Anthem area, for example, they have found people sleeping under tunnels and like taking up residents in the parks. So what I'd like to do at this time is give direction to our police chief to set up a meeting, and feel free to invite myself, I know anybody who would like to participate on our council as well, to join in. And we need to immediately mitigate what's going on in regards to how, and we've been addressing it over time, but we have noticed an increase in non-residents lingering without a place to go.
When I addressed the county years ago about this issue, they fell back on the, if I may continue?
Yes, go ahead.
They fell back on the issue that we can't transport them. The county sheriff's office said, once they're released from jail, they're out of the county's hands. That's where a Superior Court judge comes in. And the whole judicial system can work together, that's what we need to try to work out and pull together. A judge can order the sheriff's office, he can order the police departments to come pick up their people or deliver them to their town where they were arrested in. And we need to address that, and I know that the attorneys don't like me saying that, but that's the truth. The judicial branch needs to be brought into this in discussion as we go.
Cliff, you're joining us. All right, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
I also see Ms. Courtney Ramirez with her hand up. Ms. Courtney Ramirez, how are you this evening?
Hi, good evening. I'm good, I hope everybody's well over there too.
Yes, ma'am.
So I wanted to talk about the item on the agenda for the nepotism. I wanted to commend Councilmember Hughes and Anderson for putting that up on the agenda. I'm surprised it's taken as long as it has, you know, as a resident. And I'm not the only one, a lot of us feel, I think, that nepotism shouldn't be a part of our governmental offices. And I hope that you guys, you know, got my email, if you guys didn't, you know, do your own research and see. But it looks like the federal statutes even states that nepotism is prohibited in all of their branches, and according to the state of Arizona, it's a Class II misdemeanor for nepotism. It just doesn't look good in the town. And for future, you know, hopefully this passes, you know, we recently had another council member who was running, who was married to a fireman, and you know, that, just stuff like that doesn't look good. A lot of favoritism and stuff like that within those departments, it's just not a good idea. So I hope that this passes and we don't allow nepotism within our city government anymore. And that's all I wanted to speak on this agenda tonight, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time? All right, closing the first call to the council. Call of the public, apologize. Item six is our proclamation declaring November 11th as Veterans' Day. Councilmember Mendoza, will you join me down? Unless you want to just come over here, we could stand over here, and I can present you the proclamation. We never get to present proclamations up here. Councilmember Mendoza? Testing, testing. Councilmember Mendoza, before I present you with this pro- Hello? It's like kind of working, but not really. Testing, testing. Can you hear that okay? Okay. Before I present you with this proclamation, would you go ahead? Can everybody hear me if I use my teacher's voice? Okay, thank you. So before I present you with this proclamation that he will be receiving on behalf of our veterans, can you tell us a little bit about yourself and your service to our country?
I was, right after high school, I went directly into the United States Army, where I spent four years of active duty. During that time, I went to Desert Storm. After that, I decided to come back home and do a regular job. And, but I didn't want to leave the military, so I did do the National Guard for an additional 17 years. And ended up going to Iraq again in 2003. I have a number of different MOSs that, I think I have five different MOSs in the military, so I can just about do anything. I think the most wonderful thing that I have is the friendships that I've made with all the men and women that I've worked with, you know, throughout the years, so that's probably my highest achievement there, is all the family members that I've made in the military.
Do we have any members of the military in the audience with us this evening? Would you please stand and be recognized? I'm going to recognize. Without further ado, this is a proclamation declaring Veterans Memorial Day. Why does it say Veterans Memorial Day? It should say Veterans Day. We're going to. Whereas on November 11th, Americans- You are smart, you pre-gamed it. Americans commemorate the service, sacrifice, and immeasurable contributions of our nation's veterans who have proudly worn our country's uniform to defend and preserve our precious liberty and?
Whereas we celebrate Veterans' Day, we pause to recognize the brave men and women who have fearlessly and faithfully worked to defend the United States and our freedom. The devotion to duty and patriotism deserves the respect and admiration of our grateful nation each and every day. We are forever thankful for the many heroes among us who have bravely fought around the world to protect us all and-
Whereas, as Americans, it is our sacred duty to care for and support those who have shown courage and conviction in selfless service to our country. We also must not forget or forsake our veterans in times of distress as they transition to civilian life and?
Whereas, time after time throughout the history of our republic, veterans have defended our way of life with integrity, dedication, and distinction and?
Whereas, in respectful recognition of the contributions our service members have made to advance peace and freedom around the world, the Congress has provided that November 11th of each year shall be set aside as a legal public holiday to honor our nation's veterans and?
Whereas, I humbly thank our veterans and their families for their willingness to answer the call of duty and for their unwavering love of country. Today, we pledge always to fight for those who have fought for us, our veterans who represent the best of America. We deserve our, they deserve our prayers, our unending support, and our eternal gratitude.
Now therefore, I, Mayor Tara Walter of Florence, Arizona, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2022 as Veterans' Day. I encourage all Americans to recognize the fortitude and sacrifice of our veterans through public ceremonies and private thoughts and prayers. I call on all Americans, including civic and fraternal organizations, places of worship, schools, and communities, to support this day with commemorative expressions and programs. Next, we have a proclamation claiming November 25th, 27th, 2022 as Junior Prada Days. How are you this evening, sir?
It works on the floor apparently, but not up there. So good to see you again.
Would you like to give us an update on the 90th Junior Prada?
We've got a good lineup going already, we've done a lot of work out there. Things are coming together, a lot of hard work, a lot of good volunteers coming to help us out, so we thank you for your support and the town's support in what we're doing for this 90th. Definitely, everything's coming together real good.
If you need anything, let us know, and if you need volunteers, let us know. Without further ado, we have a proclamation for you. Junior Prada Days, celebrating 90 years of historical- Florence, the town of Florence, Arizona, pays great pride in its history and towards a longtime tradition. And whereas the first Junior Prada began in 1932 during the Great Depression to raise money for local schools, and has continued to hold a special place in our hearts for longtime residents. And whereas the Junior Prada rodeo is held on Thanksgiving weekend and goes back many generations. Whereas multiple generations migrate back to Florence on Thanksgiving weekend to celebrate the holiday with family and friends, and attend the many events planned for Junior Prada as they reminisce of Junior Prada's past. Whereas Florence is committed to enhancing and fostering traditions, enhancing quality of life for all residents and the Junior Prada bodies of this community. Now therefore, I, Tara Walter, Mayor of the town of Florence, Arizona, do hereby proclaim November 25th through the 27th as Junior Prada Days, celebrating 90 years of historical traditions in Florence, Arizona. Encouraging our residents to attend the many events planned to celebrate this longstanding tradition. I'd like to talk a little bit about the Junior Prada Weekend.
We, we've got pretty much everything lined up as we come down to the stretch here, there's quite a few things still left hanging out there, but we've got, I believe, over 220 contestants coming, which is great, from the AJRA. We've got a great drill team that's going to join us, same Copper State Renegades as last year, they'll be here. We have a little entertainment for the crowd after the performance on Saturday and Sunday. And then I'd like to invite everybody to come out and enjoy the 90th celebration. We'll be giving awards to all the kids as they earn them on Sunday, so it's a great time to come out and support all the kids in the 90th Junior Prada. So, thank you.
Thank you. Let's give them a round of applause. All right, next up, we have a presentation on the town's partnership with We Serve to provide lock boxes to Florence's police department to utilize the Guardian Angel program and citizens in need. Chief Wells.
Good evening. Brief story. I was at an accreditation conference, kind of getting a little bored and tired, so I stepped outside the room for a minute, and lined up down the hallway was a bunch of vendors. And I happened to go and see a table that was to my left, and it had some lock boxes on it. So I went down there and started a conversation with two wonderful women that are here tonight. And as we were talking, I started conversing about our Guardian Angel program, and the work that we're trying to go ahead and do for our senior citizens down here. They both put smiles on their faces, and they said, "Chief, we would love to go ahead and partner with you in working with the Guardian Angel program." So that's what we're here to talk about tonight, is a new partnership between We Serve and the town of Florence. I'd like for Roger Nelson to go ahead and come forward and tell you a little bit about We Serve, and I'm hoping after that, Mayor, that we can stop over there by the town of Florence, a little sign over there and take a photo opportunity with We Serve presenting us the lock boxes.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor Walter, and members of the council. We're so thrilled to be here to talk about this program that we've developed across all our jurisdictions, and we're excited to bring this forward in the town of Florence. We Serve is the west and southeast Realtors of the Valley, so we represent 26,000 Realtors throughout the state of Arizona, in the Penal Chapter, in the southeast portion of Maricopa County, the west portion of Maricopa County, the Santa Cruz County, and the Cochise County. And we have a number of volunteers, we're a volunteer-led organization, and I want to make sure and recognize a few of those folks. We have LD Hawkins, who is our Penal County Chapter Chair, so he's an active Realtor who volunteers on our behalf. And we also have Christine Bear, who is our chair-elect of our Community Outreach and Involvement Committee, both active Realtors out buying and selling property on behalf of their clients. We also have two of our staff members here, our Community Outreach Liaison, which is Melissa Zwick, and our Penal County Office Manager, Yvette Rochet, who helps put these programs on. The program that we are talking about today is our Lot Box Program, and the program's designed to allow police and emergency personnel access to a home in emergency situations where forced entry may be necessary. The Secure Lot Box Program is primarily designed for elderly residents who live alone, are physically challenged, or have a medical condition with the probability that it is necessary to call 911 for assistance. So not only are they having some challenges as it relates to that, but then they call, and unfortunately, police or fire need to force their way in, and now that, whatever issue they're dealing with now gets exasperated by having now solve fixing a door, fixing a window, doing some things like this, so this really, really helps. The We Serve Community Involvement Committee administers the program, while the participating fire and police, fire and rescue or police departments individually assign the lot boxes of which we provide. Typically, information is held and attached to these lock boxes that's stored at the participating fire and police department's aided dispatch database. This allows the storage of confidential information and creates a systematic program for the emergency response. The program is funded by the Realtors, by the west and southeast Realtors of the Valley, and each year, we budget money for this Lot Box Program. So we're so thrilled that Chief stepped by our booth to see the program and what we can do. We partner through cities throughout the state, throughout our jurisdiction, and I think we have close to 15 cities that have taken advantage, cities and towns that have taken advantage of this. The program, it's, lot boxes are donated through the efforts of our membership, through funding, through that portion, and through efforts that we do to raise funds to help propel this program across the state. Your Realtor leaders continually strive to provide these lot boxes, starting with 35 tonight, and we hope that we can donate a second round if there is a desire and a need further on. As Realtor volunteer leaders rotate each year, we make sure that We Serve and our staff liaisons are constantly in contact in this so that we can make sure that the program continues through perpetuity, because this is a problem that exists throughout, and I'll speak to it real quick. I have a mother that doesn't get around very well, fell down one time, got hurt, and they had to break the door down. Well, this was a perfect example of an opportunity that we wish we would have had a lot box on the door, and so I was so excited to see us expand this to multiple areas. So we appreciate, again, Chief Wells for his opportunity for allowing us to partner, and for the town and for the council to allow us to be part of this program with you. And we hope that it is a long, long relationship that helps lots of folks that need this desperately. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Round of applause. Council, would you like to join us, and let's greet them, and we will celebrate together. All right, the next item is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Approval of a $4,000 downtown events assistant grant award to the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce for Third Fridays and the farmer's market. Item B, discussion approval disapproval to adopt resolution number 1847-22. Adopt Resolution Number 1847-22. This is a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, authorizing the town to enter into a grant agreement with the City of Tucson Police Department regarding the Arizona High-Intensity Drug Trafficking Area. Item C is Discussion Approval Disapproval to Adopt Resolution Number 1849-22. A resolution of the Mayor and Common Council of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, approving the mutual protection and law enforcement agreement with the Tahono O'ohorom Nation. Item D, Authorization to Enter Into a Professionals Services Contract with Matrix News World for On-Call Engineering and Architectural Services utilizing the City of Buckeye's JOC Contract 202-2003 in an amount not to exceed $70,000. Item E, Authorization to Enter Into an End Users License Agreement with the Mueller Systems and authorize the Town to Implement a New Network by the Issuance of a Purchase Order. Item F, Approval of the Town Council Meeting Minutes of August 15th, September 6th, and September 12th. Item G, Receive and File the Following Board and Commission Minutes. First, the Community Services Advisory Board Minutes of June 10th, 2021, August 21st, 2021, August 14th, 2021, July 14th, 2022, and September 8th, 2022. And the Historic District Advisory Commission Minutes of September 28th, 2022. Item H, To Accept the Register of Demands Ending September 30th, 2022, in the amount of $2,903,296. Ladies and gentlemen, that is your consent agenda. Is there anybody who would like anything removed at this time? Seeing no such movement, we need a motion.
I make a motion. Will you accept the consent agenda as presented?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 8, Unfinished Business. This is Ordinance Number 719-22. This is the Second Reading, Discussion Approval Disapproval to Adopt an Ordinance of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, amending Chapter 32 of the Florence Town Code by adding Section 32, 200, establishing a Teen Council in the Town of Florence, Arizona. At this time, Ms. Lisa Garcia.
Mayor and Council, we presented this last meeting where we had our first reading. This brings back our Florence Teen Council, but more with a leadership spin, and Council will be directly involved in mentoring them. The staff liaisons will be myself and Jeff Graves. And if Council adopts this tonight, it will become effective in 30 days, and we'll begin our process of going to all of the schools that are located within the Town of Florence to solicit members. And if you have any questions, please let me know. We're very excited about this board.
All right. I am very excited about this board as well. Counsel, any questions or comments? With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion. We adopt Ordinance Number 719-22.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 9, New Business. A, Discussion Approval Disapproval to Adopt Resolution Number 1843-22. A resolution of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, establishing a policy for naming town facilities and streets. Ms. Lisa Garcia.
Mayor, members of council, this is a formal policy that will allow for us to have a solution towards naming facilities. We have been approached, and we did not have a policy or procedure in place. So with this, we will have a policy in place. Each time that someone submits for someone's facility to be named after someone, it will come back before council, and council will be the determining factor. And so this is both town facilities and streets. We did go through, and we consolidated a list since 1971 of the various facilities that have been named, and that is included in your staff report.
Counsel, any questions? Comments? All right. With that, we need a motion.
So moved. We motioned to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B, Discussion Approval Disapproval of Resolution Number 1850-22. A resolution of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, prohibiting the hiring of certain relatives of elected and appointed officials, revising the Personnel Policy, Section 203. Nepotism effective December 8th, 2022. Councilmember Anderson. I'm turning it over to you for presentation.
I thought Lisa was going to do the presentation. Okay.
I would be happy to. Councilmember Anderson requested that a nepotism policy become before Florence. Councilmember Judy Hughes seconded. Staff did put together a brief policy. It is Exhibit A to the resolution, and what it does is it strikes through, "No provisions of this rule shall exclude relatives of Town Council or Town Appointed Board Commission Committees from entering into Town Service, providing no supervisory control over one or the other exists." And you'll see underlined and in yellow immediately following is a new section that says, "Immediate family members, parents, spouse, or child of elected and appointed officials shall not be hired by the Town of Florence." So appointed officials of the Town of Florence, this does not deal with the boards and commission. It only deals with four members of town staff. That would be your town manager, your town attorney, your town clerk, and your town magistrate. That means for those of us who have full-time jobs here, no member of our family would be able to be employed by the Town of Florence. It would also mean for town officials, meaning elected officials, those of you who sit on the dais, that any new members could not join our team. It does not have any consequences or effect to any member that's currently employed by the Town of Florence. And it will be a rule that, if adopted tonight, will affect new council members as they're elected. It will not take effect to change the employment status to a employee that currently exists. Even if a new member is elected, that employee is already employed. Anybody who is currently employed shall remain employed by the Town of Florence. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Yes.
I guess I would like to modify one part of this, Lisa, that it only applies to employees of staff, department heads, or higher.
Department heads or higher.
Yes.
Mayor, Councilmember Anderson, Ms. Garcia, I think, as what Ms. Garcia just explained, though, that the appointed officials, under the language that's proposed, it applies to council members, and then it applies to appointed people such as town clerk, town attorney. It does not apply to department directors. Is that, is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm saying that a relative can be hired if they are below a department manager.
Well, the other, the other interesting thing, if I could just hop in, is the current policy that has been in existence for some number of time, I don't know how long, but the first part of the policy that Ms. Garcia read is that essentially relatives cannot be supervised by other relatives. So, for example, you know, a lower manager, if there's someone, or let's say a department head, if they're hiring a relative in their department, then they're technically supervising that person. And so they currently, under our policy, can't do that, because they would be directly supervising that person.
That's, that's not my concern. My concern is relatives of council members.
Right. So the language that Ms. Garcia read is actually, I believe, an example from the Town of Queen Creek, but it specifically says that, for example, appointed or elected officials, meaning the Town Council members, their relatives cannot be hired by the town. That's, that's what this language is saying that Ms. Garcia has proposed, or read.
Well, that's, that's the exception that I'd like to put in, is that they can be hired at a position below department manager.
I think I see what you're saying. You're saying instead of a complete prohibition of their hiring, they could be hired as long as they're not a department director. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
I would like to take this. We had our personnel attorney be able to look at this. I would like to take it back. One of the reasons why is when we were discussing with our personnel attorney this item, the item that was discussed most was how other municipalities have such a position in place. So say that I'm your interim town manager, I could not supply, I could not apply duress to any of the department heads to be able to hire my relative. And so that's some of the reason why other people have that in place. So if we're going to add that in to just have a certain section of employees defined, then what I want to do is make sure to go back and to make sure that we're not doing anything that harms unnecessarily. I just want to make sure, because we would be saying, "No employee of a council member or of a appointed official can be a department head." Well, we have direct supervision of the department heads. So that's already in the nepotism laws for the state statute. If council wanted to go in and say, "Part-time employees weren't affected by this," or if council wanted to go in and say, "Board and commission members weren't affected by this," I could understand that and put that in. But if we're going to say just department heads, then I think that we definitely need to go back for a legal review, because it would be a classification of employees.
Okay.
And Mayor, Councilwoman Anderson, and Ms. Garcia, I think part of what is being referenced is there's a concern, when you get into this kind of restriction, that the Constitution, Arizona Constitution, and some of the case law, when you're dealing with relatives or people who are related by blood or marriage, and you're restricting either what they're saying or how they're associating, you can have some constitutional law implications. So the concern from our review and with our appointed Personnel Lawyer, NHR, and as we looked at it, is that the broader we made it, or if we had exceptions that didn't have a rational basis, we could face a challenge constitutionally. And so the idea is that if the town is going to implement this type of policy, there has to be a rational basis for it based on kind of a legitimate goal. So, for example, the goal of avoiding conflicts of interest, and the goal of not interfering with smooth operations. For example, smooth operations, well, that may be hindered if, you know, the manager, the department head, is related to someone that they supervise, then it can be a problem with operations. So those kind of reasons have to be kind of the objective basis for any kind of restriction, just because they directly affect those associations that are protected by the Constitution.
I guess I have no problem with, you know, delving into this further to see what we can do legally. But you understand what I'm trying to get to. You know, definitely want the part-time employees to be exempt from this, because we hire a lot of lifeguards and things like that, that are relatives of our council members. I want to continue to be able to do that.
I think that what I understand is you want me to go back to the Personnel Attorney with our town attorney, and we'll sit down and have a conversation about what would happen if we narrowed this down to just be department heads, and how would that affect the Town of Florence?
Yes.
And we will come back at a later meeting.
Thank you. Oh, the other thing, we need to add siblings to the relatives. We have brothers and sisters, but we don't have, I mean, we have children, rather, and parents, but we don't have siblings in there.
We will add siblings.
Okay. Thank you.
Judy, did you have something? You had your hand kind of...
Can I just ask a clarifying question, because this seems really unnecessary based on what I just heard from you. So I just want to clarify. We on council don't have anything to do with day-to-day operations. We leave that in the town manager's hands. And that involves department heads or anybody else, other staffing. That's something we don't get involved with. Hiring, firing, that's not something we get involved with. So what I'm hearing from you and what I'm reading here is that we do not have, am any type of, obviously, supervision over those personnel. So, and you're saying that the supervisor, obviously, would be a conflict, and I think everybody recognizes that that's per state stat, or per Arizona State Statute, correct? So if that's already written there, then why are we discussing this? Because we don't get involved with day-to-day operations. I'm seeing how that would be an issue.
This item was brought up. The Rules and Regulations for Presenting Items Before the Council says if any two or more council members would like an item to be agendized, then we agendize the item. Councilmember Anderson brought this up. It was seconded by Councilmember Hughes. Therefore, it is coming before you this evening. This is different than the nepotism laws as they exist in statutes. Cliff very clearly, Mr. Matice Clair very clearly told us that underneath the Rules and Regulations of the state law, it says specifically that you cannot supervise someone that you are related to. And when we were talking to about the other communities that do have it in place to where those appointed officials or elected officials cannot, it was more on the lines of that a department head could not be pressured to hire someone. So say that my family member needs a job. I cannot pressure, because right now, I said, "It's your interim." I would not be able to pressure one of the department heads to hire one of my family members over someone who's more qualified. Underneath today, if one of my family members applied, one of your family members applied, one of Cliff's family members applied, the judge's family members applied, if they were the person who was the number-one rated person, they could be offered a job, and they could be hired for that job. Underneath this rule that's been presented to you, that they would not be interviewed because they would not qualify for the position. And this is based on the request that was brought forward from council members. And again, I will note that any person who is currently employed by the Town of Florence would not be affected by this rule. I know I've said that three times, but one more time for the record.
Well, I kind of walked through this when I came on in 19, because at that time, my husband was the police chief, in that we knew that he was going to retire at the end of the year, so we thought one year was not going to be that hard. Well, it was harder than I thought, to stay above the appearance of evil. And, and I had to watch everything because anything that I voted that had anything to do with police seemed to be a conflict of interest. And so I really couldn't do my job the way I should have. I mean, I was pulled off, and then I also rented a space. I had a shop in the Silver King. I was pulled off for two years, a conflict of interest, because I rented the pink, and because the town was the landlord's. So there are issues. It does create issues, and the constituents, it gives the appearance of something underhanded. At least, that's what I felt, because I'd have people say, "What are you doing?" And I would say, "I tried to not vote on anything, please. If there was anything, it slid under where I didn't see it." But I tried to keep myself out. So that's one of the reasons that I seconded to John. myself out. So that's one of the reasons that I seconded to John, because I had to walk that line for a year, and it wasn't easy. So that's why. Just wanted everybody to know.
Councilmember Benioff?
I am all for the nepotism clause. I did have a conversation with John, though. I must admit, I am guilty. I have, I don't know how many umpteen children at my house, and I think five or six of them are lifeguards, so I bet not never drowned. But as far as for the youth, I don't think, I have nothing to do with the lifeguarding or the pool. I don't even get in the pool at my house. But I would totally be willing to go with the council on anything. I just think that the children and opportunity for the youth should not be affected by this. Not just because of my kids, but there's a bunch of kids. I mean, you know, some of the families in Florence, they are huge families. The Neils is a huge family. So that's the only thing that I had spoke to John about. But everything else, I'm total agreement with. I've worked under some nepotism problems, and it was bad. So I'd really like to see it go forward with a lot more thought put into it and a little more wording.
All right, anybody else? All right. So at this time, we have direction that we have provided to council or staff.
We will meet with our personnel attorney. Hopefully, it will be before the next meeting. He does have a holiday schedule. I will have to contact him to determine when we can get in touch with him.
All right, thank you so very much. Hang on, technology is not on my side right now. All right, item C is ordinance number 720-22. This is the first reading of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, amending chapter 32 of the Florence Town Code by adding section 32300, establishing the Charles Whitlow Rodeo Grounds Advisory Board.
Mayor and member of council, so tonight, we are presenting this to be able to expand the requirements behind who can be appointed to the board. If it is a, just a board that is appointed according to the, according to the town code, then they must reside in the town of Florence city limits. We have found that a lot of our rodeo ground enthusiasts live within the planning boundary of the town of Florence. Right now, we do have two applications. We did receive an application from councilmember John Anderson. Thank you so much, sir. And we did receive a application that was for a business location. And so as part of the checking, the applications were required to check voter registration information to determine. And what we want to do is make sure that we could have rodeo enthusiasts that are residing within the town boundary, so we can put them on. And it would be a specialty qualification, so the rules in term, the rules of appointment would go right into the town of Florence code.
All right. Are there any questions or comments regarding this item? This is an action item, so with that, we need a motion.
Mayor, this is a first reading. The action should not be checked. I apologize.
All right, thank you. Item 9D is the first reading of ordinance number 721-22, an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, amending chapter 32 of the Florence Town Code by adding section 32001 to add the Charles Whitlow Rodeo Advisory Board and the Florence Teen Council to the section.
Mayor and members of council, while we were going through, we were looking at our various sections to be able to determine the numbering for the Charles Whitlow Rodeo Grounds Advisory Boards. We noticed that we should have placed the teen council, as well as the Charles Whitlow Rodeo Ground, within section number 32.001. All as it is, is a section that calls out the boards by name that the council appoints. So it's a housekeeping item to make sure that your codes are up to date. This is a first reading only, and no action is requested at this time.
All right, thank you so much. Action was checked on that one as well, just for note.
I did note it, and it will be corrected. I apologize.
Thank you. 9E is the motion to authorize the town of Florence to purchase 3,000 extinguishment credits from Greenstone Water Credits LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, for Pinal Active Management Area Extinguishment Credits.
I apologize. I'm a little lost on the agenda.
Do you want to take a few moments to catch up? We could take a five-minute.
Okay, but, I'm sorry. No, no, I, okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Each year, we take the proceeds from our agreement with Tonopah and CAGR D to purchase extinguishment credits, which will benefit the town in the future to offset CAGR D fees that exceed our allowance for groundwater pumping. We have reduced our amount this year, and we are in the process of meeting with ADWR, Arizona Department of Water Resources, to reevaluate our groundwater allowance pumping based on state statute. And this ties directly into the contract that was approved for Matrix, New World. It will be part of our redesignation, not necessarily a work product of Matrix, but it's part of the redesignation process. With that, are there any questions?
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Yes, what does this really do for us, Chris, as far as these credits? I know you've explained it to us before.
Well, the extinguishment credits are at a much lower cost than the offset of purchasing CAGR D water or paying them for their replenishment fees. So rather than paying, let's just say, round numbers, $700 an acre foot from CAGR D, we're able to purchase these credits for just about $100 per acre foot. So it's a significant cost savings, and it's an investment into our future. And it's, like I said, been a strategy of the town for, I think, the last five years.
How many of these credits do we have now?
Oh, wow.
I mean, just guess.
35,000 extinguishment credits, and I think we have approximately 35,000 to 40,000 long-term storage credits. And so somewhere out in the future, depending on our growth, I know it's a little off-topic, but I think it's important. The town of Florence, because of our water portfolio, is primed for growth in Pinal County, with everyone else most likely going to struggle to do residential subdivisions. Everyone is saying the same thing. The town is in a position to grow. I'm not necessarily saying we're going to grow at eight, nine, 10 percent, but I think we are going to experience it. The same things that when I was in Maricopa, we're seeing some of the same, the dominoes align. So we, it's impossible to say exactly when we'll need these extinguishment credits, but it is vital to continue to make sure we invest in water in every shape, way, and form we can.
I appreciate you doing this for us. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion. We approve agenda item 9E.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 9F, discussion approval disapproval of entering into an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Arizona Department of Transportation regarding necessary repairs to the Felix Road at grade railroad crossing. Mr. Chris Alice.
I believe approximately four years ago, I believe we approved an IGA that never went forward. If we didn't make it that far, it may not have been adopted at that time. In the state of Arizona, the at-grade railroad crossings are essentially administered through the Arizona Department of Transportation, or ADOT. So in order to get federal funding, that is the mechanism that they utilize is an IGA with ADOT. So this is a railroad project, and they have approximately 100 feet from the center line of those tracks or track on each side of that track. So they have 200 feet of right-of-way. And this is to reconfigure and to hopefully make it more quiet and more friendly for vehicular crossings of this at-grade crossing. And then in the future, we will probably be doing, we'll be joining them. So this, there's no cost to the town on this portion, but there will be a small cost in the future for a future item of construction that may or may not necessarily come back to council, because it could be under the town manager's signature authority.
Any additional questions or comments? With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we, IGA with a spade, regarding the repairs of the Felix Road at grade railroad crossing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G, discussion approval disapproval of entering into a roadway repair agreements with Lusser Investments, the third LLC, Skyview Ten LLC, Cas Grande, Camp Farms LLC, and Romo Construction Incorporated for roadway improvements adjacent to Arizona Farm Roads. Mr. Chris Alice.
In case anybody is wondering, the way the agenda is put together, it's kind of a first come, first served, so you can always tell who runs late. It's always me. So on these two items here, this is a project that we've been working on with the property owner, Tyler Swer, for the improvements that would be north of Arizona Farms Road to correct the grade differential, the immediate grade differential, into an ASHTO compliant recovery zone. So the first one is essentially a license, we're calling it a license agreement, and a roadway repair agreement. So this will allow us to gain access past the right-of-way that exists today. So there is 40 feet of right-of-way, and we will be going past that in order to do the construction. And then in the future, a maintenance, a maintenance agreement that will go a little bit further than that, so that the town employees can drive and do weed abatement in the bottom versus at the top where there is a 50 mile an hour speed limit. Are there any questions before I move on to item two?
Seeing none.
Item two is the actual construction agreement with Romo Construction. And this includes a sizable contingency, just in case we run into problems. I would prefer to do that versus a ratification. But the way that this current contract is set up, they're the ones that would have to prove beyond that the plan is a change order would be necessary. So I think the base contract price is 402,000 and some change. We arrived at this cost-sharing by looking at the in-kind services being provided by Mr. Tyler Swer. And those in-kind services are approximately $490,000. So Mr. Swer is supplying the town with, or our contractor, with construction water, and supplying us access to all of the dirt that we would need in order to. So that 490,000 would be the cost differential if there was a, there was no participation by the property owner. We would have to import that dirt from who knows where. It could be multiple miles. So for people not in the industry, it is extremely expensive to truck in dirt or to export dirt. It's a very expensive process, and it only exacerbated by diesel prices currently. Are there any questions on part two?
Seeing none. With that, we need a motion.
Is this a motion for all of 9, 9G? I make a motion that we approve 9G, one and two.
Mm-hmm, yes. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Town manager reports.
Mayor and members of council, just want to remind you that tomorrow is Election Day. The polls will be open from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. This is a polling place. So after we adjourn into executive session, I have asked our team to remain and to clear the building for us. At about 8:30 tonight, we will have Pinal County come in to set up the room. And then once again, at 5:00 in the morning, they will be here to put out directional signs and to take charge of the building as a polling place. The other thing I want to talk about was future meetings. Tonight, we're going to talk about when the council will interview the town manager. We have set aside the week of November 14th, as well as the week of November 28th. November 21st will be a regular meeting. December 5th will be our ceremonial meeting. We will be saying farewell to councilmember Anderson and councilmember Hughes. And we will be swearing in our new council members. We invite the community to join us. And a reception afterwards where we can celebrate all of their accomplishments, both the new and our prior council. On December 19th, council traditionally goes dark, and so we will not have a meeting on that date. On December 7th, though, we will have a rate study for water and sewer with a public hearing, and that will be in this facilities. In January, we're looking at hosting a CFD work session with our new council members being elected in. It's time to talk about the rules and regulations associated with being a community development board. And so we have invited Mike Cafiso and Mark Reader to come in and to do an educational session. We will get you the dates as soon as we have one. And if council would like that to be within the community facilities district, we can make arrangements with Sun City Anthem Clubhouse, if that's what your preferred would be. Town Hall, AVC, H, Town Hall Air Conditioning HBAC Schedules. So the town of Florence is undergoing a new air conditioning system that will have this building in construction for three months. Construction will start basically tomorrow with the administrative side. Administration will be leaving this building, and we will be going over to community services. It'll be approximately four weeks when we're finished. They will come in shortly after the meeting on December 7th, so we'll start on the 8th. And this building will be down for approximately four weeks, followed with our January dislocation of finance. And hopefully, we're going to have most of them in the administrative side. And so hopefully the public will not see a lot of...
(noise)
Yes, Ozzy Osbourne's one of my favorites, sorry. Hopefully, the public will not see a lot of disruption in services. But meanwhile, town staff will be, we will not be having our files. We will not be having access. We'll be able to come over once in a day after 4 o'clock to gain access and to take out information for the next day. So we would ask for everyone to understand we're going to be working in a construction zone, and it may take us a little bit longer. The other thing I would like to point out is that we did have a full town hall meeting with all of our employees, and we did go over the employment compensation. I would like to thank Ms. Becky Jimenez, who did present with me. I would say it's the largest employee meeting that we've ever had, and it was very well-received. And the staff has been thanking councils for looking at a competitive edge to Florence. So with that, that's my report, unless council has any questions. So with that, that's my report unless council has any questions.
I do not have any questions on what you just presented. I do have a question regarding an update. Do you have any update regarding the signage around the community? I know Mr. Graves was working on that project.
The sign that is located next to the bank that, that has been repaired.
I saw that, they were touching it up and painting it over the weekend.
Yes, and he has let out a bid for the company that we are going to work with and he has a sixty thousand dollar budget. We do suspect that that sixty thousand dollars will be spent by the, by June thirtieth. And any monies that will go in will be tied to the contract that council will award. It's just that the other half of the project will take place after July one. We are looking at the historic signs that are around town, as well as the monument signs that are on our entry points. And as with the roundabout, we'll have a sign that is a sign like you see at the library entrance that says Florence. And so that is also the sign that was approved for the roundabout. So that's the one they're considering putting around all of the entry points to where you come into Florence, you know you've came into Florence.
All right, thank you. Any other questions regarding the manager's report?
No.
Okay. Department reports, does any member of council have any questions regarding the department reports?
No.
Seeing none? Proceed.
What's the status on the well repair for the rodeo ground?
Ms. Hughes, the well is currently under bid right now. It's, I can't remember the closing date for it, but it's on the street right now for bids.
Okay, so is that going to be done at the first part of this year? I mean, do we have a, do we have a date for completion? Because otherwise, it could just float into space.
Depending on the, what we get back and if the well is repairable, then we're hoping that we can get that operational as soon as possible. But it, it just depends on what the, they see when they go in and look at what the status of the well.
That means we have to award a bid, we have to get a construction schedule. Once we have a construction schedule, we'll make sure that we forward that on to council.
Okay, thanks. All right, this is our second call to the public. At this time, is there anybody that would like to speak, either in person or online? Ms. Ramirez, go ahead.
Good evening again. So I wanted to go back to the item agenda with the nepotism. As a community member, as a resident here, I would really like you guys to consider, you know, nepotism is nepotism is nepotism, whether it's a department head, you know, city council. I had to log off the meeting after I spoke a few minutes ago, so I didn't hear everything that was said after that. However, you know, according to federal and state statutes, it is prohibited and unlawful and is a misdemeanor. Also, um, you know, I think the only real case that we have right now is, is the mayor with the fire chief. And like I mentioned earlier, had the other council member won a seat, she would have been, you know, married to another firefighter. Everybody just voted to give all the firefighters raises and some people looked at that as a conflict of interest. In situations like that, you know, people didn't recuse themselves for the vote and that kind of constitutes favoritism in, you know, different people's opinions. So I think that when you guys look at that issue again and dig deep down into it, if the federal statutes and state statutes say it's prohibited and unlawful, then I really think that the town of Florence should consider that also. I'm all for giving kids the jobs, but for councils and, you know, department heads to, you know, make it a habit to, you know, apply those nepotisms within, within our government, I, that's really frowned upon. And I think all those aspects should be looked into. It just doesn't look good. All I wanted to say about that.
Thank you. I'm going to take a moment just to respond. Typically, I wouldn't, but I'm going to, at this moment, ask our town attorney.
During call to the public, mayor, if individual council members criticize, they're entitled to respond at the end of call to the public.
That was not the question.
Sorry.
So because I was just, and I just want to choose my words very carefully, has the town of Florence, particularly myself, done anything that is in any violation?
No, I'm not aware of any violation of any nepotism occurring in any of the decisions by the council since I've been here in seven years and three months.
And as a matter of fact, have I ever violated any vote of compensation for any of our employees?
No, that you, along with the town council, do not have direct involvement in appointing positions under the town manager or interim town manager, nor do you have decision-making authority for those employees.
So I am specifically addressing that because I think it's very inappropriate for those comments to have been made. And that is all I am going to say about that at this time. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at call to the public? Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, Tom Rankin again. That last speaker doesn't know what in the hell she's talking about. This, you came on council, Jim was already working for us. And we looked at that strenuously, looked at everything, and so there would be no conflict of interest. We ran it through our attorneys. I ran it through personal attorneys I knew of that deal in the employment law. There is nothing I hate worse than people going around assuming that they know what they're talking about and don't have an idea of what it is. Jim and Tara have never violated any laws or any ordinances that the town of Florence or the state of Arizona has. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, sir. And I'd like to think that that's not the only reason that this policy had been proposed, but again, I will not speak to that at this time. Going forward, we have our call to the council for current events only. Councilmember Mendoza.
Okay. A few weeks ago, I made a statement that I wanted to go and speak to Penal County about the conditions of the roads, particularly those that aren't covered by one of the propositions that's out there. Last week, myself and Ms. Lisa had a meeting with Supervisor McClure and County Manager Leo Liu, talked about what's going on with Hunt Highway. I don't know how much I can talk about, but it was a very promising conversation. It sounds like we may come up with an agreement soon and start making some progress on that road. So I thank you for your assistance in that and getting that all, you know, set up and that's all for me. Well, thank you.
Councilmember Hughes.
Remind everybody to go out and vote if they haven't, if they haven't sent it in. And that's all, thanks.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
I might just have a couple of things. I was able to attend the Florence Makes a Difference Day and it was great to see so much participation in the community. We had tons of people come out. There was a lot of familiar faces, a lot of hugs given, and it just really felt like family, all helping each other. So I wanted to thank Allison for the opportunity to, once again, carry on that tradition. There was some opportunities for improvement, of course, but I think that as long as you've got the community backing us, you know, we can accomplish great things. And so I want to thank everyone also who came out to participate and be involved in that, neighbors helping neighbors and everyone coming together. So it was great to see everybody there. And then also, Allison, I wanted to just see if there was an opportunity. I know we had talked about arts and murals and I'd like to have a follow-up conversation with you regarding some opportunities going forward. That's something I've always been passionate about, is bringing arts to the downtown area so we can help our, support our local businesses, as well as help beautify downtown. So I have some opportunities that I think might be coming around the corner I just wanted to chat about, so. In other news, everyone get out and vote. It is very important to have your voice heard, no matter what party or what you're voting for. If you have a passion and you're educated, definitely want to make sure you get out there and put that voice to work, so.
Councilmember Neil.
Just encourage everybody to vote. Also, Second Chance Prom is coming up and I'm gonna do Roger, I wanted to throw that out there so people that didn't know can go. Good chance for me to take my old big leg woman out and dance a little bit. Also, I want to shout out to my Florence Gophers who played the playoffs up in freezing cold Round Valley. I think it was twenty-nine degrees. I'm tropical people, I'm used to that, but they lost, but they fought hard and had a great season, so love you Gophers, that's it.
Councilmember Anderson.
Well, I would like to really emphasize getting out to vote. This is the one privilege that we have, that if we don't like what happened here tonight, or we like what happened here tonight, you know, we can decide who to vote for. And we've seen so many negative ads, that just, it just kills me to turn my TV on and see all this negative stuff going on. That doesn't help me decide who to vote for. All that says, I shouldn't vote for that guy, but if you listen, there's negative ads on every one of them, so I shouldn't vote for anybody. Hopefully, our election process will change over the coming years. But get out and vote and vote for the person that you think will make changes and try to improve our world. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Amen to those voices and finding your voices for voting. So yes, go out and vote. I want to definitely give praise for Councilmember Mendoza for taking initiative and setting up that transportation meeting. And, you know, after hearing the debrief, it really sounds like you have that in to make that positive difference for that transportation, so thank you. And Kristin, I appreciate Councilmember Rodriguez, you using your voice to also bring forward the change with, you know, arts and continuing to grow. Ally, you have been amazing in your position and you do everything with such grace and positive for the community. If you haven't had an opportunity to go over to the library and check out the exhibit, how long is that going until?
It'll be there through the end of this week, or Thursday, through Thursday, because we have the holiday on Friday.
Through Thursday, you know, go out, it's amazing. It's such a treasure that we have that in our community. So with that, we are going to now adjourn to a joint executive session between the Florence Town Council and the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One for the purpose of discussions or consultations with designated representatives of the public body and/or legal counsel pursuant to A R S Sections thirty-eight, four thirty-one, oh three, on procedural changes to the town's community facilities district policy. With that, I need a motion.
Mayor.
Yes, I know, I skipped it because it went down. I need a motion to adjourn to the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One.
Mayor. Need to order.
What is it?
I need you to call it to order.
Calling it to order, roll call, please. Board Member Mendoza. I scrolled down too far on my agenda and I put my glasses away, so I apologize to everybody in the audience.
And I did take a silent roll call for you.
Thank you. Item C is discussion and possible action to approve Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, September sixth, twenty twenty-two, special meeting minutes. Ms. Garcia.
You have the meeting minutes before you and they just need to be adopted.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, we need a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item fifteen, need a motion to adjourn to a joint executive session?
So moved. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will come out and adjourn.